At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded.
Here.
Chair, let the record reflect you have eight Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you, Clerk of the Board. Please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
I'm willing to ask God to give her peace and love her of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Kowalski and was seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded.
Aye.
Let the record reflect you have eight votes in affirmative on all the communications.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 4th Agenda and Regular Meetings, the September 25th Agenda Setting Meeting, Regular Meeting, and Executive Session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Williams, was seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Aye. With an exception from September 25th Agenda Setting and Regular Meeting.
That's for the 25th?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth and the executive session?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Abstaining on the September 25th meetings, and aye to the rest.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye to all.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye to all.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye to all.
Let the record reflect you have eight votes in the affirmative for the September 4th Agenda and Regular Meeting, and you have six votes in the affirmative with two abstentions for the September 25th Agenda, Regular, and Executive Session minutes.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking, on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Hi, good evening. Diana Gonzalez, Clerk. Basically just came here today, wondering if you had any update from the Highway Authority that you could share, and looking over the agenda. I see that you had some legal issues for resolution pertaining to the reservoir, which says to me that, you know, something's happening, so just updates in general would be appreciated. And then also see that there was a budget adoption in the amount of $125,000 related to the reservoir project, so if you could just provide some insights on that. That's all. Thank you.
Lawrence Budnick Westfield. Also about the Clark Reservoir Project, I want to thank you very much for changing it, to modify it, to allow continued kayaking and recreational activities at the reservoir. And the second issue is to consider in the future, on a separate issue, having countywide animal control services, because there is a burden on each of the towns. The county had addressed that a few years ago, and it never kind of went through, but it is a great burden on each of the towns to have animal control services, and having a unified, comprehensive approach would be better for each of the towns. Thank you.
Good evening. Delia Collins, Clerk, New Jersey. I have a couple of questions regarding, I'm not wearing, I'm not here right now as a member of the Clark Recre- Reservoir Committee, I'm here as a anti-hunt person. I called the Department of Recreation County yesterday, trying to find out exactly how many hunters are on the property by St. Agnes, and if the hunt, I heard from what I spoke to a nice woman, she advised me that the hunt is from sunrise to sunset, which I find utterly ridiculous. I'd like to find out how many tree stands there are within that area, and if it extends from the area next to St. Agnes, or the area behind St. Agnes, which is similar to an L, and also there is baiting stations within that area, if, how many are there, and I'd like, really basically like to find out how many hunters are assigned to that area, and I was told I would have to contact the Department of Public Works to find out how many hunters are assigned to that particular area, and if they are truly there from sunrise to sunset. Okay, now back to the Clark Reservoir. I tried to get over and look at the, where the retention basin has been back and forth, back and forth, where it's going to be, and on the Francis Drive side, there's a 50-feet barrier from the homes on Francis Drive to the proposed stormwater basin. There isn't, from the back of St. Agnes's parking lot, there's no indication of how many feet there is between the back of the parking lot and the formation of the basin. There is a regu- there is a stormwater drainage in the parking lot of St. Agnes, there are two grates within the parking lot of St. Agnes, and then behind the parking lot, there is an open drainage area there with a plastic vinyl-type drainage going into, looks like a man-made kind of stream with rocks and things, I guess to get the water to go out and spread along the back of the reservoir there. And, let's see, that's it. Thank you. And I hope we don't have, oh, another question. When St. Agnes property is developed, will it still be a hunting grounds for the bow hunters in Union County? I'd like to know, because I know they still have the hunt in Nomahegan, and that's an active park, and I think they have the hunt up in Wachang, I'm not sure, and I know they have the hunt in Oak Ridge Park, so these are active parks, and this is going to be a more active area than it has ever been, and I'd like to know if the hunt will extend to the time when they are going to be developing this area. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board. Various Golden Nuggets, Bruce Patterson Garwood, New Jersey. REZO 771 is increasing CME associates' contract 50 grand to total 300 grand for on-call engineering services. We opened three months of bills list to check CME charges, and sadly, all the listed bills were just identified as professional services and contracts from 2021 to 2024. The bills list had no reference project numbers, no contract numbers, resolutions, nor work identified, making the paperwork trail lax and vague for the public. The public would have to Oprah every bill to find out what it's about. Why is this bills list so vague? And can you suggest to the public, if there is another list, that the county keep showing all these details on the bills? REZO 778 is accepting $2 million from the state for development capital and operating costs, expenses. This resolution appears alarming that the state is giving us $2 million to continue county operations. The other meeting was a resolution for half a million dollars from the state for unspecified parks use, along with the hiring freeze back in August and the major scaling down of the reservoir project. We can't shake the feeling that something financially is happening inside our county, so please explain the funding details of this resolution, and if this is some kind of foreshadowing of a financial stress the county is experiencing. REZO 781 is accepting 125 grand from the state for the Clark Reservoir Project, and it's good to see additional monies for their project. Thank you, Department of Community Affairs, the county, and the Clark Reservoir Committee for their efforts. REZO 786 is amending a contract to ATT Sports, adding 400 grand to total 550 grand for some paving. We opened for the original contract of AT&amp;T, and nothing exists, some people did explain it to me upfront. We would have liked to analyze what this 400% increase is based on, but can't, so I don't know, could you do some more detailed explanation of it? 794 is the PBA Sheriff's Contract, and just an overview of the increases that were agreed to. 788 through 790 and 793, these are increasing contracts, 300 grand to Royal Printing Full Service Mailers and B&amp;B Press for election-related contracts, and it's this close to election, so I'm just wondering, are there any more costs that are going to come out and bite the taxpayers about that? REZO 802 is lauding Scotch Plains Mayor Lussardo for being the keynote speaker at the county Columbus Day celebrations. We are dismayed that the Democrat-controlled county is holding a public occasion paid for by the taxpayers to promote a Democrat mayoral candidate up for election. Also, it looks like Commissioner Mirabella should be abstaining since he works for Mayor Lussardo. General comments, it appears the Clark Reservoir Project has some outstanding issues to resolve, as the committee noted. One is the status of whether small boats and kayaks can traverse under the Parkway Bridge, which the county manager noted would check and respond back. The other is that stormwater basin planned next to St. Agnes Church parking lot, someone needs to explain if this basin is being constructed using taxpayer dollars for a private entity's parking lot, which we all know is, of course, illegal. I also must thank the various newspapers for exposing a county issue of poor transparency. We read in the media about a new county park planned at Glen Side Avenue Scotch Plains, and a second new county park planned on Springfield Avenue Berkeley Heights, but the details of these parks were only presented in the council meetings of Scotch Plains and Berkeley Heights. Along with the Clark Reservoir Park, which is, the public was not even aware of until the Clark Reservoir Committee brought it to the floor of the meeting, the county had no presentations in any of these Commissioner meetings, yet note the three parks are being paid for by county taxpayer dollars. In other words, no citizens of the full county are aware of these parks, other than only the residents of each town they're planning for. This exhibits poor transparency, and I request that you please stop that transparency, that is. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one, I'm sorry, seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. I'm going to call upon County Manager Oatman to respond to a few of those.
Sure, I'll take them in no particular order. For the parks in Scotch Plains and Berkeley Heights, there's been numerous transparency. We've had resolutions here awarding contracts, there's been press stories, there's been renderings, so I'm not sure transparency of the issue, maybe your following of county government would be. For your other issue about a contract, I think you said somebody talked to you before the meeting, and that was County Council Bergen, he was, I don't know if you forgot, but that was him, and he told you it's been two weeks, we don't have the contract back yet. For number, let's see, let's, which one is it? Excuse me, number 778, that's the way the state wrote the resolution, that's the budget language they gave us. For 781, that's additional money from the state for the reservoir project. Let's see, for the hunting in a couple of years at the park, that's not been determined, that's so far in the future, I have no idea, once the project is complete, whether it'll be hunting there or not, that's, that hasn't even been thought about or determined yet. We have nothing new to report on, on the reservoir, and as for those details about how many hunters and stands, we don't have that readily available right here tonight, but we'll get you that information. So yeah, that one, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's all I got, I think I covered them all.
You did. If I can just ask Director Scutari if you can please just comment on Resolution 794?
Oh, and just before the director comes up, I believe Mr. Patterson was alluding to the county having financial problems. I think two weeks ago, we were getting criticized for our AAA bond rating and having too much surplus, it's just hard to follow what we're going to criticize on. Thank you, Director.
For Resolution 794 of the PBA 108, there was 2% increase across the board for 2023, and it will be a 3% increase across the board for 2024, 3% for 2025, and 3% for 2026.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-766 through 2024-802.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye to all, with the abstaining from 2024-783.
Commissioner, you have, Chair, you have eight votes in affirmative on all resolutions, with the exception of 2024-783, seven votes in affirmative with one abstention.
Thank you. Now it is time for Commissioner comments, and I would like to begin with Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chair. We're in the month of October, which means it's time for our histori- historical weekend, four centuries and a weekend, which is on Saturday, October 19th, and Sunday, October 20th, and unless otherwise noted in the program, or on the website, there, all the sites are open from 12 noon to 5 p.m., and each day is packed with special exhibits and activities. There's our 38 different sites to go to, I wish I could say you could get to all of them in two days, but I don't think it's possible, but if you pick a few each day, I'm sure you won't be disappointed. For the kids, I would suggest maybe Deserted Village, or Reeves Reed Arboretum, both of those are big and have plenty of room for the kids to wander around, and lots of activities. Then there are the small house museums, like Boxwood Hall in Elizabeth, Robinson House in Clark, Osborne Cannibal in Springfield, Caldwell House in Union, there are a couple of cemeteries with famous people buried there, and there's a general store in Hillside, a transportation exhibit in Rawway at Merchants and Drovers, Shady Rest, it was the first black-owned golf course in the United States, and that's located in Scotch Plains, so, and there's Liberty Hall in Union with many historical points to look into, so, and that's, that's not all of them. So I would really encourage people to have a look at the website, ucnj.org/foresee, and find out which places you would like to visit that day, and it's funded by Union County and also by the New Jersey Historical Commission, and organized by our Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs. That's it for me, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. We invite you, Board of County Commissioners invites all residents to participate in our free scrap metal recycling drop-off events. One is, let's see, the next one is on Saturday, October 19th, from 9 a.m. to 12 noon, the drop-off locations are in Cranford and Rawway. In Cranford, the Emergency Services Building, 151 Boulevard, in Kennelworth, Kennelworth Boulevard. In Rawway, Rawway River Park, the service yard across from the swimming pool. Residents from any Union County municipality can bring scrap metal to either site. Items such as pots, pans, appliances, and, and more will be accepted. Residents must remain in their vehicle at all times, materials should be placed in the trunk or cargo area, or truck bed, to be more easily accessible to staff to remove from the vehicle. For more information and for a full list of what is accepted before you come, please go to ucnj.org/recycle, or call us at 908-654-9889. And I just want to remind everyone again that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and it's also Halloween Month, so that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm proud to announce that Union County Food Security Summit will be held on Wednesday, October 16th, at King University's Liberty Hall Academic Center, hosted by the Department of Human Services. After participating in discussions at NJAC and learning from successful models in place like Bergen County, Director Anderson, Public Information Director Kelly Mahns, and myself were inspired to bring these insights back to our Union County team to help develop this food security summit. This summit will bring together food pantries, soup kitchens, community leaders, and advocates to collaborate on addressing food insecurity in Union County. Through workshops, discussions, and networking sessions, participants will explore innovative strategies for combating hunger, promoting self-sufficiency, and improving food distribution and outreach efforts, while connecting individuals to essential supportive services. Local food service providers and community stakeholders are encouraged to attend, and for more information, please visit ucnj.org/food-summit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And let's go Mets.
Commissioner Bodak?
As you're all aware, we have a very important election coming up on November 5th, and one thing that helps make the election go well is poll workers, and Union County residents can still apply to become a poll worker for Election Day. Poll workers will earn $300 for the day, starting at 5:15 a.m. until at least 8:15 p.m. after the polls close. No experience is necessary, and all new poll workers must attend a mandatory training session. Residents 16 and older can apply, with those aged 18 and over needing to be registered voters. Bilingual residents are especially needed. To apply, visit www.ucnj.org/pollworker, or call the Board of Elections at 908-527-4236 for a paper application. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would like to invite all residents to experience fall in Union County with hayrides and campfires and haunted hayrides, brought to you by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Enjoy a hayride, entertainment, and delicious hot chocolate and marshmallows to roast over the campfire. Tickets are available for multiple dates at ucnj.org/ticket, and must be purchased in advance. No tickets will be sold on-site. Then, kick off November with a thrilling journey through the deserted village of Feltville during our haunted hayrides on November 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Explore the eerie grounds and encounter witches and circus performers and more. Tickets are $8 for Union County residents and $16 for non-residents, and they're also available at ucnj.org/ticket. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to announce that Union County invites all veterans and military personnel to join us for a networking mixer on October 16th. This event, hosted by the Office of Veteran Services, provides a valuable opportunity to connect with local resources and build relationships within the community. The mixer will feature complimentary food and a cash bar at the tavern at our Galloping Hill Golf Course. While attendance is free, pre-registration is required. To register, please visit ucnj.org/veterans, and we look forward to having as many veterans out there as possible. I want to finish with just two notes, best to all who celebrate the Jewish holidays last weekend and this coming weekend, and I agree with Commissioner Granados and the county manager, and say let's go Mets, and I'll bank the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you. County Council Bergen?
Thank you. If the Chair will indulge me, let's go Mets.
County Manager Oatman?
Ditto.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Let's go Yankees. We would like to invite, we would like to invite residents with disabilities and special needs ages 13 and older to attend the annual Halloween Bash this Friday, no, on Friday, October 18th, from 6 to 8 p.m. The free event will be held at the Rawway Recreation Center located at 275 East Milton Avenue in Rawway. The Halloween Bash will include games, dancing, and a haunted house. Attendees are asked to wear Halloween costumes for a chance to win prizes in the costume contest, and there will be light refreshments. Admission to the Halloween Bash is free, but pre-registration is required. To register online, please visit ucnj.org/opsdn-reg. This event is hosted by the Union County Office for Persons with Disabilities and Special Needs, under the Division of Individual and Family Support Services of the Union County Department of Human Services, in partnership with the City of Rawway. For more information on the Halloween Bash and other programs or events hosted by Union County Office of Persons with Disability and Special Needs, please visit ucnj.org/dhs/opsdn. Thank you, everyone. And let's go Mets, too. It's my second team, that's my second team.
I'm going to keep my mouth shut about the game. We are proud to announce more shows for the sensory-friendly theater series at the Union County Performing Arts Center, the UC-PAC, in Rawway. These performances are specially adapted for children and adults with autism and other sensory sensitivities, offering a welcome environment for all. Our upcoming performances include Halloween Hollow on November 3rd at 2 p.m., and the New Jersey Ballet's The Nutcracker on December 1st at 2 p.m. Each performance is tailored with adjustments to lighting, sound, and audience size to create a relaxed environment, and families can also access sensory tools and take breaks as needed during the shows. All tickets are $8, and you can visit theucpac.org to purchase tickets. Speaking of the UC-PAC, I just want to highlight, about two weeks ago, we concluded our first cohort of the Legacy Arts Club Stories of a Lifetime, which was a program that we launched this year in conjunction with the UC-PAC, where our senior residents could take writing workshops and then present their pieces, their monologues, to an audience, and it was an absolutely beautiful night. I believe we had 12 participants in the group, and each person shared their story, most of them read their own, some of them had someone else read it for them, but the feedback we heard from the participants was just tremendous, and being a member of the audience and listening to these people share their stories was, was just amazing, so we are, we had such a great, we had such great feedback that we are going to continue, so we have another cohort that's going to be starting soon, and we have another one after that, and then hopefully into next year as well, but if you are interested, or you know someone that's interested, please let them know, check the UC-PAC website for more information and where to register, and it was just really a great, great program, and I know any of the people that participated really, really enjoyed it. Some of them I know want to sign up again, so, so we want to make sure we have room for everyone. And then also, yesterday, myself and Vice Chairwoman Leon and Commissioner Kowalski, along with our Deputy County Manager- along with our Deputy County Manager, hosted the first Safe Streets for All Action Plan Advisory Council Meeting, and it was a really great turnout. We had a representative, at least one representative from almost every municipality in Union County, and the goal of this is a grant that we received in order to develop a plan countywide for better roadway safety, so to decrease fatalities, especially for our most vulnerable residents and roadway users, including pedestrians, bike users, scooters, and the elderly. So it was a great, a great first start. We know we have a long ways to go, and this is also in conjunction with the City of Elizabeth, but it will be countywide, so we're really excited for the future of, you know, more safe roads. So I think this could be our shortest meeting since I've been Chair, so with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a good night.